Good morning. Welcome to the December 23rd, 2020 Board of Selectmen Meeting, the last one of the year. So we will get started right now with our usual Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
The United States of America.
The Republic.
Which it stands. Under God, indivisible, with the ready, justice for all.
Thank you. Better there. Okay, is there a motion to approve the Board of Selectmen Minutes for the regular meeting of December 10th, 2020?
Lauren Raven, I motion that we approve the Board of Selectmen Regular Meeting Minutes from December 10th, 2020.
Sorry, had to unmute Jill Oberlander. I'll second that motion.
Thank you. All those in favor? Fred Camillo's a yes.
Jill Oberlander, yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the Board of Selectmen Minutes for the Special Meeting of December 10th, 2020?
Lauren Raven, I motion that we approve the minutes of our Board of Selectmen Special Meeting from December 10th, 2020.
Jill Oberlander, I'll second that motion.
All those in favor? Fred Camillo's.
Jill Oberlander, yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Perfect. Thank you. And is there a motion to accept the Board of Selectmen Minutes for the meeting in December 16th, 2020?
Lauren Raven, I motion that we accept the minutes from our Board of Selectmen Special Meeting on December 16th, 2020.
Jill Oberlander, I'll second that motion.
All those in favor? Fred Camillo's a yes.
Jill Oberlander, yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
And finally, is there a motion to accept the minutes for the Board of Selectmen Meeting of December 18th, 2020?
Lauren Raven, I motion that we accept the minutes from our Board of Selectmen Special Meeting held on December 18th, 2020.
Jill Oberlander, I'll second that motion.
Thank you. All those in favor? Fred Camillo's a yes.
Jill Oberlander, yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Okay, thank you. Going on to the updates, I'll be quick today for Selectmen's updates. First, I just want to give a big shout out to our DPW and Parks and Rec Personnel for cleaning up really quickly the snow and especially DPW getting the leaves out before the snow hit. I know our neighbor to the north still has a lot of leaves around the city there and it's really created a mess. So we were well ahead of schedule. So can't thank them enough for what they did. And of course, again, Parks and Rec for doing our schools and sidewalks in front of the schools. Also, the Police Department and the GEMS for responding to a couple of fires. And of course, our Fire Department, our Greenwich's bravest, had some, quite a few fires to battle with the last few weeks and including the tragedy in Riverside. And our hearts and thoughts and prayers go out to that family. But just to, again, to thank them for the job they do, which at times may be, maybe thankless or just overlooked because they just were so used to them doing a really good job. But I just want to thank them all for keeping us safe and keeping everything on track. We had two ribbon cuttings yesterday, a new child daycare center over next to St. Rock's Church where the YM had a childcare facility. We cut the ribbon there last night. And then also, on Sunday, we cut the ribbon over at Raphael's Bakery at 146 Mason Street. So if you get a chance, stop by and see them. And certainly, if you go to Raphael's, it looks like some good stuff on the menu there. So we wish them all the best. The valet parking, we're waiting to get the final results from that, but it did pick up apparently the second weekend. People were just weren't aware of it. And even though we put reminders out, it's new. So I think there is some promise there, but we'll get, we'll get more, we'll get the final numbers shortly. Also, I want to thank Sebastian and Alyssa again for the lights. They look great, but also for working on the drive-in movies that we've had the last few weekends. They went really well. And a special shout out to Pure Leaf, Division Pepsi, on our own Erica Liverani and Darren Rom, who were instrumental in getting that donation and that up and running. So it worked out well. I went there one night and people seemed to be really enjoying it. So we thank them a lot for what they did. I don't know if you read, everybody heard, but our tax collector, Heather Smiglio, announced that there'll be a 90-day extension, like we did last July, for taxes, which would be very helpful as we hopefully head to this last stage of the pandemic. So that will certainly get, you know, be a relief to a lot of people. And finally, we're working on the budget now and we're working on reducing headcount and to, you know, still deliver the services the way people expect them. But we think we may be able to add a position to deal with economic development. And I know that's something we've talked about for a while. We have all these initiatives going and it would be nice to have somebody there to help pull it all together for us. I know we've got so many, so many things going on now. I think that would be a smart thing for the town, but it's not, hasn't been presented yet. But certainly, that's what we're seriously considering. So with that, I will turn, I'm looking, I'm going to go left for right and I'm looking at Select Person Oberlander. So Jill, good morning.
Thank you. Very good morning, everyone. Very, very brief. I just want to wish everyone, our residents and our town employees, everyone on the call, a wonderful holiday season that all of our precautions are starting to, we're starting to see a little bit of relief, which is fantastic. I hope everyone stays safe and stays healthy. I particularly want to extend a thank you to the town employees who have worked so hard this, these past nine months to make sure the rest of us can continue on as seamlessly as possible. I'm sure they are well-deserving of a little holiday cheer. And on behalf of everyone, thank you for your hard work. Happy holidays, happy new year. And I will strongly support the Economic Development Staff person, as I've been a strong advocate for that. So I look forward to hearing more on that, Fred. Thank you.
Thank you, Jill. Appreciate it. And then over to Select Woman Raven. Good morning, Lauren.
Good morning. Thank you. I'm a little disorganized today, so I'm going to just read through some of my notes. We've been getting a lot of dialogue going about the need for more building committees, either at the Board of Ed or even with some of the bigger town projects. So continuing to have the dialogue with our community. Also have attended the last West Cog meeting on behalf of Fred last week and learned that the West Cog will submit for a grant with the Connecticut DOT to outfit the 18 municipalities within the cog for additional electronic, electric vehicle charging stations, as well as increase our fleet of electric vehicles. There may even be an idea, you know, we keep talking about the tram trolley, whether we can use part of that grant to fund something of that nature. So that's just in the early stages. Also have just attended Jim Himes' introduction to all the new CARES Act, second, second iteration of it. So I'm still processing it. That's why I was a little late today. But things like the expanded unemployment, expanded underemployment for individuals, the addition to if a household had mixed legal citizens as well as immigrants, that they'll be able to get some of the individual relief. What they're doing for businesses, as well as what was called the Grab Bag, some additional funds for K through 12 education, some additional university education hospitals, et cetera. Still processing. I'll type up notes and make sure I share it with the fellow board members. And I too want to wish everyone a happy holiday for those that celebrate a very merry Christmas. I think we're all ready to put 2020 in the books and look forward to a brighter 2021 and echo Jill's comments on thanking our town employees for getting us through the past nine months. And I hope everyone does get a chance to relax, recharge, and get ready for 2021. Thank you.
Thank you, Lauren. And I couldn't have said it better than the both of you did. The new year, coming new year will be a time of reflection, but also of gratitude and hope. The last nine months have been tough, but as both said, not only our town employees and all our departments, but our, the people of Greenwich really came through with flying colors. And it's, all the credit goes to them. And we're just grateful to live in a town with such thoughtful and respectful people and who care for their neighbors. So thank you and one and a tal, as we say in Costco, to everybody. Okay, going on to start out with old business. And we have the Proposed Ordinance concerning the roadway safety and utilization of off-duty police officers. And Town Attorney Tim Herbst is with us. Good morning, Tim.
Good morning, Mr. First Selectman and good member, good morning to members of the board. I first want to start out by wishing each and every one of you a very happy and healthy holiday and a happy new year. I know this has been a very challenging year for those in government and my hat is off to all of you for how you have weathered this pandemic. We have for you, before you, for your consideration. And ultimately, it will be a decision of the board whether to continue this to January. But I did want to come back with a status report on the Proposed Ordinance. Yesterday, you received two documents, I believe, that were forwarded. I sent to First Selectmen Camillo and then they were forwarded to the other two members of the board. You have before you the redlined version of the original document that was put before you at the last meeting and the red lines that have been made to that document, and then a clean version. I can inform the Board of Selectmen that this redlined version was part of a collaborative process between Chief Hughes' office, the Greenwich Police Department, the Department of Public Works. I think Jim is on, while he was very instrumental in eliciting feedback from, from the Department of Public Works and also feedback from the Greenwich Police Union. So this has gone through several layers of review, several iterations. The document before you is the, is the end product of what I believe to be a very collaborative process that brought all the key stakeholders together. I will also say that I had the opportunity to review the mail with the proposed language that was sent to Attorney Marino by Select Person Oberlander. We hope that this condensed version of the ordinance honors some of the comments that came from Select Person Oberlander with respect to condensing the original document. And with that, I will open it to any questions or comments from the board.
For Selectmen, it's Town Attorney Vin Marino. I just would point out that, first of all, I want to thank Tim for all his hard work and gathering all the information on it. He did send it over to me. I do have Select Person Oberlander's comments as well. I have not yet, because of my schedule, have had the opportunity to fully digest it myself. And just looking at our schedule, I know the RTM would meet at the end of January. If you wanted to try to meet that agenda, we would have a meeting the beginning of January and just so that I would have the opportunity to review it and just be able to say that I did. Since I'll probably be asked that at the RTM, I would just respectfully ask if this could be put to your next agenda so that I can review it, digest it, and answer anyone's questions that they may have.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that. Yes, I, I think that's wise. Certainly, we would like Select Person Oberlander's questions to, you know, and concerns to be addressed. I do, I know there's been great progress and thank you, Tim, for getting it there. I'm confident we'll get this done. It's, I think it's a very good thing for the town, but it's always better to have, you know, everybody's concerns addressed. So I think that's a smart thing to do and prudent. So thank you, Finn.
And if there's any questions or comments, if I could get the benefit of that. I know Select Woman Raven has raised her hand a couple of times. And if Select Person Oberlander has any comments that she'd like to make now, I'll take note. Or again, I'm happy to meet with anyone offline.
Lauren, I saw your hand up.
So it's more of a request for a little help. So as I look at the red line, what is it that was being redlined? Is, is it the difference between what you presented two weeks ago? Or is that also redlined from the original ordinance? Because I actually, maybe I'm just having a little challenge finding that language in the original ordinance. So I'm just not sure what's being redlined.
I'm going to defer to Attorney Herbst.
Can you hear me? Okay. What is being redlined, as I understand it from the multiple iterations that I've seen circulated, is the original ordinance as well as proposed modifications since that ordinance that have been either removed or additionally edited?
Is there any way that someone could just send the original ordinance? Because it would be so much easier to compare. That would be super helpful for me. It doesn't have to be today, but at some point.
We will send you the original ordinance in its, in its form and the red line. Again, I'm, I'm becoming the age where I'm asking my children how to turn on the VCR. So, but I'm looking at my red line and it's not viewing as.
Yeah, you have to show all markup, not simple markup. Little word for you. Some stuff I do know.
I'm scrambling right now to say where that, where is that? So I'm not looking for a tutorial today, but I'm going to, we will make sure that we have all that present for you in advance of the meeting, as well as any additional.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Jill.
Yeah, thank you. And I second the, the request to put it off until January. We didn't only get the revised draft yesterday afternoon. I didn't see it until this morning. So I do appreciate it. I thank Mr. Herbst for, for his efforts. I did have a couple of, just on first impression, a couple of questions. And maybe that will be resolved by, I don't know whether my red line is showing all markups. I didn't get Mr. Michael's markup at all, so I don't know which comments. I only saw one, one edit from him on this draft, so maybe I'm missing something as well. So I would ask that if there are separate emails on this from Department of Public Works, that they spend that. Just a quick question, whether contractor is otherwise defined in the charter. This is going to be adding language to, I believe, the charter, right? So, and you've defined contractor in this section. I'm not sure. I haven't gone through the charter to see where the contractors otherwise defined someplace else. If the Law Department hasn't already looked at that, I would strongly encourage them to do that. Similarly, you've defined town in this ordinance. Maybe town is also defined someplace else. So just in terms of when it comes back to us, perhaps the legality as to form might already be cleaned up so that what we're asked to vote on will be consistent with the language already existing in the charter. It may already be. I just, I don't know. I'd like clarification. And then I guess this is a question for you, Fred, just for background knowledge. If you could talk about the origination of this proposal, because I'm still of the opinion that we have the authority already in our existing structure, that we don't need an ordinance and less is more, in my view. Actually, I'm joining your view on this. Less government is more. I'm curious as to why you're putting forward a, a more government than a less government? And maybe you could give us a little bit of an explanation for the public. If this is coming back, I would ask that we do enough publicity so that the public has an opportunity to comment down a way in it as well.
Thank you. And welcome to the Republican Party, Jill.
Who's to say that I don't sit right in the middle anyway?
And this was brought up to me by the GPD about ways of enhancing public safety. And after listening to them, there was a couple of reasons I thought it was a good idea. I know DPW had some concerns and that's where Attorney Herbst did a lot of good work getting them together. But it was, that's where it came from. It wasn't my idea. I did ask some of the same questions that you did or would have or will. You know, do other towns do this? Is it more costly to business, businesses? And I was told no. The, I asked questions about the, you know, the percentages of money. Does some money goes to, does some of the money go to the town? I understand that, I was told, and I forgot where in this chain I went. I was told this, that some, some of the money that when the police do, it actually goes back to the town of Greenwich. And there was a figure there and I could certainly, if someone wants to forward that to me. I have one number in my head, but I don't want to say it unless I'm off a little bit. So that, to me, it was just an added benefit. But the main thing was, if it costs the same thing, wouldn't you rather have a police officer there than a person that works for a flat company? They could respond to a lot of things. They certainly have more broad powers. So it just made a lot of sense to me in that respect. But we want to make sure that everybody has all their questions and concerns addressed. So that's, that's it. It wasn't something I, that I was thinking about.
Thank you.
Thank you. And then thanks again for the follow-up, because I think that's, it's important that we, we make sure that all the questions. Because if we don't ask the questions here, they're going to get asked somewhere else. So it's better to get it ironed out here. But we'll, we'll, we'll come back with this again the next meeting and hopefully everybody will be ironed out. Thank, thank, thanks, Tim, and thanks, Finn. Okay, going up to new business, we have Deputy Chief Mark Marino on, or it's Luanne. I think Luanne's on, in Chitting. Good morning, Luanne.
Good morning, First Selectman. I'm on also.
There you are, in the ready corner. Okay. Thanks, chief. This is about the residential parking permit in Central Greenwich. So I'll turn it over to you. Thanks.
Okay, thank you and good morning to everyone. So what we're proposing here is, maybe I know you talked about going into the new year and maybe this will be a step in the right direction of starting the new year off right. Hopefully, at least that's what we're thinking. But you know, what we have before you is a plan that's been developed by the Parking Services staff. And it's basically in response to a lot of comments and concerns that we've been hearing really over the last many months as people have been spending more time at home and we've seen a lot of different changes. There's definitely been a change in the parking trend that we've noticed. Obviously, you know, with people working from home and hybrid schedules and just not really driving their cars as often as they normally would. You know, what we thought we would do in response to some of those concerns is look at a permit program for the residents that live in the downtown section of Greenwich that are really regulated by parking meters during, during the day. Part of what we want to do is offer a parking alternative so that people that are not using their cars during the day, during the work week, instead of having to use the meters every day, if they had a permit, that would alleviate that problem as far as moving, moving the cars and so forth and going out and feeding the meters on a daily basis. So the other thing that Parking Services is hoping is that by providing the residents with a parking alternative at a slightly, at a reduced annual rate when compared to the meter fees, that the town will benefit by providing a much-needed service to the residents and also further one of our longstanding goals, which is to steer all-day parkers away from the two-hour parking spaces on Greenwich Avenue. And this will give people an incentive to use the long-term 12-hours parking lots that are situated throughout downtown Greenwich. And basically, the permit would allow residents to park in any one of the eight 12-hour parking space, parking lots in Central Greenwich. So I don't know, you know, I provided the board with some highlights of the program. I don't know if you want me to go over those now or, you know, but really what we're doing, what we're thinking is to start off with offering 100 permits and then, you know, and then see what the interest and demand is with regards to that. We thought that the fee of $720 would be in line with some of the other parking programs that we have, namely the Plaza Parking Garage, the Soundview Lot, and also the Lafayette Lot on Lafayette Place. What we would envision is that we would offer the 100 permits. If there is a demand beyond that, we would initially, we would use a lottery system similar to what we did in the Lafayette Lot. And the first 100 people that are drawn from the lottery would be offered permits. These permits would not be renewable on a year-to-year basis so that if a person got a permit in the first year, that wouldn't necessarily guarantee them a permit in subsequent years. This way, we kind of open it up to other people that may have an opportunity so that, again, people aren't just constantly renewing them and having them and, and blocking out other people from having the opportunity to get a permit in subsequent years. And obviously, we would, what we, what I thought the best thing to do was to, as far as the boundaries go with regards to the program, is to use the map that was recently generated during the fire study that was done by the Matrix Consulting Group and published in the, in the recent fire study report that was provided to the town. Kind of gives clear indication of what the downtown boundaries are. And I think those fall in line with what we're trying to do here because that's the area that's most affected by parking meters. So we think that that's, that would be a good boundary, boundary lines. Obviously, we, you know, we, we have to draw the line somewhere. So we felt that that is a report that has been accepted by the BET and shows a clear delineation of the downtown district or the downtown area. So that's pretty much what we're looking at. Certainly, I know this is a first look, so I don't know that the board is going to be prepared to vote on it today. But, you know, we're prepared to do that if, if you decide to do so. And obviously, answer any questions that I, I could.
Thank you so much, chief. Just a couple of quick questions and thank you for responding. Because this is one of the two things I think are an issue downtown, which is the residents who live there reaching out to us and also the meter feeding by employees on the avenue. This, this is addressing one of those issues, so it's greatly appreciated the work done here. When it says that within the, open to residents within the boundaries of the Central Greenwich District, do we have that the streets, because I could just see some people applying and being outside of the boundary and then asking which streets are on it?
All right. Well, I, I do. And I included, I believe I included a map in the, in the packet that was sent, sent to the board. But that's certainly something that if, if the plan is approved, the, the boundaries will be, you know, explicitly outlined in, in the program with regards to the application process. But it would really basically cover both sides of West Putnam Avenue from Mason Street to Brookside Drive. That section of Field Point Road, really from West Putnam to Railroad Avenue. Both sides of Railroad Avenue from Field Point to Mason. Both sides of Mason Street from Railroad to the Post Road. And really, all of the, the streets in, in, in between there.
I'm sorry, I missed that, I didn't see the map there, so thank you. Yeah, it's clearly marked, I appreciate that. And then, do we have any, any statistics on how the Lafayette Lot worked out? Were all those spaces taken in that lottery there?
They were, yes. We had, we, as you recall, we offered 20 spaces initially. The, I believe we received 24 applications. So we did do the lottery system there. We're now in the renewal process for that particular lot, so there are a number of people that renewed permits, and, but we were also able to also bring some people off of the waitlist that didn't get offered a permit initially. So that seems to have worked out pretty well. I would like to do that again in some of the other parking lots in downtown. As far, that's a merchant program, so people that work in the downtown district. And that's something that I hope to come to the board with early next year.
Thank you.
That program.
Thank you, yeah, that would be something that would really address decades-old problem, so, thank, thank you for this, and thank you for working on that solution. Thanks, Chief. Lauren, I see your hand up.
Thanks, Fred. So first of all, Chief Deputy Marino, I see a Pittsburgh Steelers helmet in your office. So I wanted to thank the Steelers for allowing Buffalo Bills to be the number-two seeded so far for the AFC.
We're struggling a little bit right now, but I think the first selectment agrees with me that when the games count, we'll be back up where we need to be.
Yes, and Jenny, can you mute select person?
Long-suffering Bills fan, long-suffering.
Oh, they have a great team, and I'm happy for them.
But my, my question is, so if we offer 100 spots, do you know how many actual spots are in all the 12-hour lots? So I'm just trying to understand what percentage of availability would be dedicated to this program?
Well, like all of our permit programs, having a permit does not guarantee you a parking space. Basically, you can park there as long as there's, you know, you can find a space, just like everyone else, just like the commuter parking lots at the train stations, really. I, I don't see this as being an influx of new parkers. I think we're addressing people that are going to be looking to engage in this program are parking their cars there already, they're parking their cars there today, it's just this allows them a different alternative. So I don't see this as in a major influx of new parkers or new cars into the, you know, the volume of parking spaces that we have available now. If that makes sense.
Thanks, yes.
So yes, good morning, and first I want to start off by, by thanking you Deputy Chief Marino and the entire Parking Services staff, because I can only imagine knowing the number of calls we get about the frustrations with parking, how many calls you get with the frustrations of parking, so, so I really appreciate your trying to find solutions. I just wanted to highlight for when it comes back, a couple of questions that I also have. I had the same question as Selectwoman Raven about the number of spots in each of these 12-hour lots. So if you could provide in the next round, each lot and the number of spots that are available. And how many, and, and so if it's not guaranteed parking, if all 100 of these permit holders wanted to park in one of these lots, they would be, I'm just wondering the logistics of how it works, whether you'll be identifying a certain section of the lot for permitted parking, whether they, these lots are required, since it's residential parking, whether these lots are required to be vacated at the end of the day for cleaning and other maintenance issues, or whether a someone who lives in this district would be able to effectively garage their car there 24/7. And, and how that impacts the flow of traffic. In addition, you said that it's a lottery system, I didn't catch whether the people who get awarded a permit, whether they automatically move to the bottom of the list, or whether they are thrown into the lottery for the next year. Because in order to have it be truly, you know, have everyone get a fair opportunity, if somebody, you know, it is a, it's a game of chance, I guess, each year, or are we then saying, we'll move them off the list, you get an opportunity one year, but if you've gotten a permit, we have to give everybody else an opportunity, and we don't have a sense of demand yet. Fourth, whether you've spoken to planning and zoning. I think what really struck me on this is there was an article, I think it was in Greenwich Free Press, over the weekend. I didn't realize there had been a bowling alley in, in, right by the Gerillic and herbs, that, I don't, there's a technical name for it, and they're talking about building apartments and their parking configurations, and how there weren't sufficient spots for new residences there, and so it made me wonder, what is our planning department saying to these apartments dwellers or home dwellers when they permit or authorize, and whether there are specific parking requirements, and how this permit program engages with that process? So I, I'm, and I will reach out as well, but I'm wondering whether you had already spoken to planning and zoning about how this would interact. And, and finally, I think, you know, I, I really applaud the willingness to consider all types of ideas for our parking, because people are really struggling with it right now. But I, I would really, I'd like to call for sort of a holistic understanding of all of our downtown parking issues, so that when we're looking at it, I can understand that, so I'll reach out to you and Ms. Ballantyne separately to try to have that dialogue before this comes back. I just wanted to raise some of my questions with this particular program. I guess the other question I had is, when you said it's a slightly reduced annualized rate, I assume that's based on the people using the two-hour meters from nine to five, five days, six days a week, I guess, or the, the regular two-hour meters, right? The goal is to move them off of the two-hour meters, but my understanding is that Parking Services was monitoring the usage, and people are not supposed to stay all day in the two-hour spots, and so technically, we should be chalking, whether it be chalking tires or whatever it may be, enforcing those two-hour meters. I guess it suggests that we're not, are we not enforcing that now? How does that, how does that come into play?
No, no, we most certainly are enforcing that, and so I, I hear that, that problem, you know, that, that issue come up quite, quite frequently, you know. I, I don't know how, really how true it is, the enforcement officers are out there, and they do write violations for meter feeding, so it's not something that's not happening, there is enforcement going on. How widespread of a problem is it? You know, I, I don't really know, I guess it depends on who you talk to. But I, but it is something that we do hear frequently, that it's a problem with people, people parking in the two-hour spaces all day. So it is something that the enforcement officers check on a, on a regular basis. So the permits, though, would, the lottery system, the, the way it would, would work, or the way I envisioned it to work, would be that you, if you're, every year, you have to apply for a permit. So based on the number of permits that are applied for during the renewal period, if there's over 100, then they would go into, it would go, everyone would go into the lottery. So if you had a permit this year, and you wanted to apply for another one next year, you would apply and go into the lottery system again. I don't know how else we could manage that, really.
So let me give you, let me ask you another question. I have four drivers in my household. If I lived in that district, could each one of the drivers submit an application for a permit, or is it one application per household?
No, as long as you live in that, as long as you can prove residency in that particular district, then you would be eligible to apply for a permit.
And are the permits transferable?
No, no, they wouldn't be transferable.
So if my son got a permit, my daughter, you know, he couldn't transfer it to my, you know, will there be a black market for permits? Question, I mean, you know, I'm thinking, I'm just thinking out loud, you know.
And I, and I appreciate that, and there could be, you know.
Wouldn't it be for the vehicle and not the driver?
It, it would be a hang tag. So i- in essence, you know, that's something that we can talk about a little bit further, whether we, we put a sticker on the car, or so that it's not transferable. The hang tags are the most readily visible, so the, you know, but they are transferable from one car to another. So that does create a bit of a problem. But it's very similar to the train station permits, where were you currently using hang tags?
Thank you, I just, just thinking, you know, thinking out loud, but the real, for me, I really would love to know how many spots in each lot. And I really would like to talk offline on, on how it gets administered. If we have, you know, you know, 75, you know, let's say every, you know, the density is located the Board of Ed North lot, can every spot then be taken by residential permit holders?
Right, to get, to go back a little bit to one of your other questions, we wouldn't be designating, designating certain sections of the parking lot for these permits as long as you're parked in a legal, a legal parking space in one of those parking lots where you would normally be required to use the MSM machine to pay for daily parking. As long as you have the proper permit in that parking lot, that would satisfy the, you know, the, the parking fee for that particular debt. And we do have the 24-hour rule, so cars cannot park longer than 24 hours on public streets or in the parking lots. That's part of the town ordinance.
Yeah, how does that work, though? How do you enforce that?
Typically, you know, that's something that typically comes in through reports to the Parking Services Department, or even the Police Department. You know, if somebody reports a car that's parked there for, you know, in a particular neighborhood or on the street for a day's on end, we'll typically get a call about that.
But I guess I'm, I'm wondering, I'm just thinking about New York City parking, right? When, when they have street cleaning, alternate side of the street cleaning, obviously, for those two hours, everybody parked on one side, north side moves to the south side, double parks for the two hours of the street cleaning, and then moves their car back. I mean, is it, unless, I, I'm just wondering, you know, so I, let's say I'm a resident, I park in the Board of Ed lot. I move my car from 11:00 PM to 12:00 PM one day out to the street, and then at 12:00 PM I move it back, and then I start my 24 hours again? I mean, I, I just administratively, I'm just trying to raise some questions that, in thinking about this program.
It's a, yeah, it is a problem that we run into sometimes, you know, not you, in residential areas where a person will move their car a few feet every day, you know.
Right.
Technically, they're within the limits.
Right, right, okay, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, thanks, Chief, and we'll, I guess, circle back with this at the next meeting for a second read, but I appreciate all your work on this.
Okay, thank you, sir.
And thank you. Okay, last item for new business is to amend the term expiration for James Eric Ivestor as an alternate member of PNC Board of Appeals.
Just to give a little bit of background, I think we talked about this at the last meeting, and again, we're all getting a little bit more educated. There was some interim terms established, so he's completing an interim term, so we just have to change the term. So Lauren Raven, I motion that we amend the term expiration date for nominee James Eric Ivestor as an alternate member of the Planning and Zoning Board of Appeals to October 31st, 2021.
Jill Oberlander, I'll second that motion.
All those in favor, Fred Camillo's a yes?
Jill Oberlander's a yes.
Lauren Raven's a yes, and this had not gone yet to the RTM, so there's nothing to amend with the call in January. Little thing.
Just one, one quick thing, I, I just realized, I just saw a note, this goes back to the December 10th, 2020 minutes. There was a spelling error on one of the speaker's names, page three. I know we moved the minutes, but I'm hopeful that with the board's concurrence, we can just correct that spelling error before it gets posted, is approved.
Jill, would you be kind enough to identify which name is misspelled?
Yeah, I think it's Alyssa's Bonoma, right, not banana.
Okay, I'll double-check that.
Yeah.
On the 10th?
Yeah, yeah. She does so much for our town, I don't want to misspell her name in our minutes, so we could just check it, before it gets posted.
In the, Jill, where was that, in the?
Page three, bottom of page three.
Yeah, I think it's, it should be an M rather than an M rather than.
I think it's also an O, I'm going to pull up my email and look.
Banana's a very, very common name, but.
It's, yeah, no, no, it's, I don't, inadvert, inadvertent spelling error is, is my.
It's, it's B-O-N-O-M-O. B as in boy, O as in Oscar, N as in Nancy, O as in Oscar, M as in Mary, O as in Oscar.
Thanks, Lauren, and thanks Jill for catching that.
Julie, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so that is it for the regular meeting. Again, thank everybody for, for zooming in with us, and for those who are not going to be for us the rest of the day, again, we wish you Merry Christmas, a safe holiday season, and all the best of health and happiness in the coming new year. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Lauren Raven, I motion that we adjourn our regular meeting of December 23rd, 10:55.
Jill Oberlander, I'll second that motion.
All those in favor, Fred Camillo's a yes?
Jill Oberlander, yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Thanks, everybody.
See you later.